Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, this is not a city council meeting, so I'm not going to call it to order, but I will say welcome and good evening. It's so good to see everyone out this evening. I'm going to sit at the dais until we get to a certain point on the agenda, and then, you know, I'll probably come down that way because I wanted to be a little bit informal, but I think the first time out of the gate in trying to do a town hall that there were some things that needed to be reasonably formal. So I'm going to try and go down an agenda. Everybody should have an agenda. And I'm pretty excited about some of the things that we are going to discuss. I'm going to make some points, and then towards the end, we'll have some forums, and then we'll close it out. We'll take whatever time we need, but we certainly won't belabor a whole lot of things. If we need to take a lot of time with something, then maybe we might need to sidebar that issue another day or another time. But again, I want to say welcome and good evening to everybody. I'm Roger A. Powell. Some of you do know me, and some of you may just now be coming tonight to know me. I don't know for sure, but I've written down a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to say, obviously, is that I got elected to office in 2017. I'm now on my second term, and I'm glad to be serving. I've got a pretty long tenure here in the community. I've been a resident since 1961. I had a birthday last month. I'll use that birthday of 1961 because I've been here that long, 61 years. And I'll contrast that in what I may say or discuss because those are the things that I will probably say that have been probably a benefit to me and maybe even to some of you by having that tenure. I've been employed here since 1976, and if you do the math on that, I've been here working for 46 years. I came working here at 15 years old and wasn't quite telling the truth to everybody about being here. And Ms. Goodlow started laughing because she knows that I was telling a lie to get in here. Certainly, some of you may know that that even haunted me later because that's how I became the poster child for bad things that really turned out good later anyway. So, you know, I had to clean all that up. So I think I've told that story since 2016 to a lot of people when I started to run for office and tell them, you know, I haven't always been a choir boy and I, by far, a voice scout. Just like anybody else, I make mistakes. And I think that those mistakes would make you better. So with the town hall meeting, and you know, the title of town hall is just what we're here. This is, you know, the old-fashioned thing that they would say about City Hall or Town Hall. We're here at City Hall, and this is a place where we can have interaction. And I think that pretty much every two weeks, when I sit on the dais with my colleagues, we try to resonate that message of what we're doing and how we're doing it and what we're trying to do. And never once will you hear any of us say that we got this thing totally all made. The only thing you will hear most of us say, and I would be the first to say it, is that I'm not trying to figure out how to do this. That's not what happens here. Shame on me if that's what I'm doing. I'm not overzealous. I'm not full of myself when I say that. But God forbid, if I just came up here and I'm wringing my hands about what to do, then that's not where I belong. And if we get to that point, then we all got trouble. But the biggest thing is, in Town Hall, what some of you have heard me say in public meetings, how I feel about, I found in politics and government that when people talk about transparency, it sounds like a punchline to me. Because if you're doing what you need to do every day and you have openness in government, then you don't have to run around and try and prove that. Just do it. It's not anything... And so that's what I really would... I feel much better to just change the word, and I'll call it openness in government. That's what this is about this evening. There should be no smoke and mirrors and oath and daggers about what we do. And I believe that that's what we've been doing since I've been in office. So one of the things with the state of Markham and saying what the state or what the condition is, that was one of the things that we wanted to do this evening as well. I have unfortunately been under the weather a little bit for about a week. I did test for COVID tonight, and I'm clear, so my wife can verify that. I've been testing to make sure that, you know, that I don't get anybody sick, but I did make sure that they stayed away from me down up here. So I need somebody to get to work, that's for sure. But I wanted to give an update about, you know, about the state of government and what we're doing. And usually those things are done annually in most places in government and certainly, you know, cleared from federal government, state government, to give some type of answer about what's going on and where people can ask questions. And, you know, you would know what's going on. But if I tell you enough, hopefully that's... You know, we don't have a lot of questions. You know, we have the questions that may have been unanswered. And then I'll take a note of that so I know what that may consist of. So I went over to, you know, No Man's an Island. I always refer quite often to the city council as a rule. Tonight, you know, the department heads don't typically come out all the time. That's one of the things that, since I've been in office, I've really frowned upon. I think that if the mayor and the city administrator can't answer what's going on, then again, there's another shame on us. That's what our job is, is to be able to relay what goes on, and they shouldn't have to come out here every night to be doing maybe a dog and pony show, if you will, because just dragging employees along and, you know, holding my hand or me holding theirs is ridiculous. And some places, they still do that in their government, and that works for them. I think that myself and the aldermen and the other elected officials, they interact with the department heads every day. If you have problems with these departments, you can call them. I know I interact with them about issues every single day that some of you called them about. And so they're here tonight because I thought, you know, this would be a good thing for you to see who, you know, who's doing what here, who's working and what the staff consists of. So I'd like to introduce each one of them here. I'll start off with... The staff kind of gives me a... They're getting used to me, though, but when I always talk about public works. So I'll start with public works because I'll have something to say about public works tonight to you all as well. But we've got Ed Simmons. He's a field superintendent. He's covering tonight for Todd Platon, who's the superintendent of the department, and he's here. And all of them will be available after the meeting, maybe some course of the meeting tonight, to answer a question if need be. If I can't answer it, or Mr. Champion, they're here to certainly answer questions as well, or straighten me out if I don't get it correct. You know, one of the things that we did, and I thought, just like any other city, I know I went back to the city council about trying to get a city administrator. We hadn't had a city administrator in, I don't know, 50 years. I'm just guessing, maybe that long. We had a city manager at one point, and I think we had a city administrator, and we had a village form of government back in the '60s. That changed. And so what happened with that is, you know, I know that the previous administration had chief of staff and things like that. I just thought that having a professional form of government was something we needed. There are far a few and in between full-time mayors anywhere, and certainly in the Southland. If your municipality is bigger, then you would have that. Certainly, I didn't want to get ran out of town right away to tell you that because some people weren't trying to hear it. That's just what we got used to. So maybe we'll revisit that again somewhere down the line, but that's where we're at for the time being. But I said that to say this, is that we went to try to recruit talent. Oh, and we're going to have you over there, if you don't mind. Okay. We went to recruit talent, and when we did that, we wanted to get someone who had been well fascinating in government, and I'll talk about his potential in a minute. But that's what we did with the city administrator. But we also did that when it came to recruiting and rebuilding the building and code department. That was just in dire need. One of the things that we were able to do was, we went out and we looked for talent, and we found the personnel to do is Rob Shinehorst. Rob works a dual purpose. He works in the fire department as an assistant, as well as he works in the building department. So we're getting a lot of mileage out of what he does. But his experience in government is pretty vast and pretty long. And I know that our council is pretty convinced of what all the staff is capable of because I had to go to each of the aldermen and try to make sure that I vetted and told them what the idea was and trying to get the right staff here. The next person that I'll introduce is the police chief, Chief Genius, and deputy chief Sam Harris. They moved up through the ranks. Both of them are tenured as well. Been here many years. And I often refer a lot of times to those two, and certainly Chief Genius, because of their tenure in the community and tenure at the department. I kind of joke with them from time to time about history and things like that because we've been living here so long. So I always will point that out. Next, I'll introduce the fire chief, Tony Masiata. He's come through the ranks, and I'll have each one of them after I just kind of give them an introduction. They could say their piece about their tenure. But Tony has been here and went through the ranks as well. In fact, when I worked in the fire department, he worked under me when I was a deputy chief in the fire department. So next, I'll introduce to you, he handles the EMS department as well with ambulances. Next on the dais as well with me tonight is Tracy Smith. And she is in human resources, and she's a newcomer. And we did a lot of vetting when it came to her as well, and we're glad to have her onboard as well because we have taken what we're doing with employees very serious and making sure that we're getting the right ones and vetting them in and out of the process to be here at City of Markham. I'll introduce now someone that probably everybody might know at one point or another, my administrative assistant. And I usually don't get very collective about my chief or my... I don't really do that much. But I'll take some ownership to say my administrative assistant in this case because Ernestina, I'm very proud to say that she's worked under several administrations, and she told the line with everybody she worked with. She didn't take any prisoners about who she worked with, and she came over and transitioned to work with me, and it's worked, and I'm very proud of what she does, Ernestina Martinez. Then I will introduce two other people that are sitting down here, but our administrative service coordinator, which is Sonia Khalil. She's another one that's worked in many departments, and she's come back to work with us as well in another capacity. And then we have our high-end director, Christine Fisher, who works with us as well. Last but not least, and I started talking about his potential, and I'll let him, and then we can just go down the road in introductions. Mr. Derek Champion, you can just, each one of them will tell you a little bit about themselves very quickly, and then we'll go into our next part of the state of function of government.
Good evening. Happy holidays, everybody. I'm Derek Champion. I wear two hats here with the City of Markham. I'm city administrator and economic development director. Just a little bit of backstory. I started my career in state government with the Illinois Comptroller's Office. I was public affairs manager. I managed everything south of Roosevelt Road. It was my introduction to meeting all the mayors in the Southland, and that's when I found out that most mayors were part-time. From there, I went over to the Department of Commerce as African-American Business Development Manager for the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. Got promoted to deputy director over the Office of Minority Economic Empowerment, office that was established to help communities like Markham, low to moderate income areas. From there, went over to the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, worked under President Steele, helping out with participation goals on her executive team. And then my phone rang, and I'm here with Markham now. But I'm really happy and enthusiastic to be in a role like this because I truly care about communities like this. One of the things that really helps communities like this is having the opportunity to go after grants. Rents are a major economic engine to keep communities like this running. And we'll get a little bit more into that in the program, and thank you for being here.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Town Hall meeting. The mayor's sponsoring. My name is Jack Genius. I'm the police chief. I've been here with the department majority of 40 years. Lived here in town, a couple of blocks away. Mom died here. And I love the citizens of Markham. I love the community. They're treated well. And I intend to treat everybody else well and respectfully.
Deputy Chief Harris. Let's say "formal." You can relax.
I started here in October 1991 as a dispatcher. And I wanted to be the police. We used to get yelled at trying to break up fights as a dispatcher and run off the radio. Got on the force in '93, and I was extremely active. I had a million nicknames. Rover Cops, Man. Some of them that I can't say. I worked narcotics, investigations. Then after that, I started getting aggravated watching all the people speed through town. So I decided to do something about it. So I ended up like about $10,000 tickets in about five years. It was a lot of work. So then after that, became a sergeant and then trying to transfer the energy that I have towards these younger officers and confronting some of our problem houses and people. It always aggravated me with the gang bangers. When I let a kid go. You know, see a little kid crying, you know, and then tell everybody that's my little brother. And if he comes to me again, it's going to be a problem. So after, you know, after all that, and then trying to, like I said, trying to transfer that energy to the officers, it's been challenging. Trying to get people to stick their nose in and be where they're supposed to be, you know, where the trouble is, not sitting on the other side of town. And then I've been in administration for the last four years. By 2019, I became a lieutenant. And the only thing that I think the mayor forgot, I never thought I would get a chance to help try to shape this department. But we've been able to hire new officers and hire officers the right way. You know, off the top of the list, not reaching down to number 50 and skipping 20 people. And then you get somebody sitting on their behalf for 20 years and not just sucking up taxpayers' money. Takes me off. So... And so I'll be here a few more years, and I just want to leave this town better than I found it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. It's a tough life. It's a hard life. Ms. Tracy.
So my name is Tracy Smith. I have over 15 years HR experience. I'm a new kid on the block. I've been here for five months, and it's been a great time. I have an MBA in business administration with a concentration in human resources and project management.
I'll step down with Rob Shinehorst.
We had a great time with him. I'm a member. I just completed my 31st year in the fire service. I came from a neighboring community where I spent over 24 years there before I came here. In that time I spent there, I spent seven or eight years in administration, rebuilding the code department, the building department, and the special services. And when I was looking to the mayor, knew I was getting ready to leave there, he asked me to come over here and rebuild this department. So I'm happy to be here. Well, I've been here about a year and a half, but it seems like I've been here a lot longer than that.
Yes. How you doing? My name is Everett Simmons. A lot of people call me Ian. I'm the field superintendent for Markham Public Works. I started in 1993. I was a cashier laborer. I rode the back of the garbage truck. Went from riding back up to driving. Became 203, which is the water department. Installing meters, reading meters, and such. My job is now, I was appointed to field superintendent. My job is to answer to the mayor throughout the city to see what needs to be done. About branch pickup, powder repair, snow plow. That's my job to get the guys out. And say it.
Thank you. Mr. Chief Masiata.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Masiata. Been with the Markham Fire Department, City of Markham, for the last 21 years. Come up through the ranks. I'm blessed to be able to serve the people. That's what we're here to do, is to serve the citizens of Markham. I wouldn't be in the position on the endless, not for the mayor and every firefighter that works for me. They make it all possible. I'm just the guy that kind of sits here and gets to talk a little bit. But they're the ones that do everything. So thank you for everybody that works with me and for me and the mayor.
Mr. Ernestina, I want to have you say a couple of things because I don't know you do so much. I don't know. We'll be here longer than we were for Chief Sam.
Have to leave the best for the last pair.
There we go.
Well, I am proud to say that I'm the mayor's administrative assistant. And like you stated, I've been here with previous administrations. And what do I do? What don't I do, I should say? Day-to-day operations, administration of the city, and being part of the city with a new vision. It's like I'm proud of that. I'm proud to say that the city has a new vision. And I'm here to help the residents because that's what we're here for, help our residents. And if you ever need anything, I'm always upstairs in the mayor's office.
And she is. So I'll keep moving, and one of the things that I left out off of my resume that, again, I felt that it would be a benefit is that, other than the police department, there isn't one department I have not run in my time being here. And that has only lent itself to what I'm able to do with working with them. All of them have tenure, and they all know government, and we all... One thing I have to say is that all of these people, and I know that the city council knows them too, is that they're definitely here early and they stay here late. Nobody has to... Sometimes you have to tell them to go home. And that's really what we have drawn in terms of people who work here. Everybody here is just like that. They work very hard, very diligent. And I'm just glad that I have the understanding of all of what they do because it makes it that much easier. I know that when I sit with the police or the fire department, you know, when people say I'm a quick study, in my case, I can say that, and we can just cut right to what we need to do if we get things done pretty fast and pretty efficient because I already understand it. We've been speaking this language together for so long, and I've been in it for that long. So one of the things I wanted to say about, when we did the introductions, I always thought it would be fitting to really say, well, what does that mean in terms of how it functions? Well, we know that it's really up to government leadership, and it's up to my office and the administrator for day-to-day operations. Certainly after we get with the city council about budgeting and what the purse strings are to run the city and how it's going to function. You know, we have to be able to take these resources and provide service. And we have done that, and you have to have a plan. You have to have a plan, and you have to be able to execute that plan and have some management with it. That's really what it's about. You know, if we did not have any organization here at all or any plan about trying to get this done, that's why it's easy when I say what I did about, well, you don't have to figure it out if you know what to do, if you've got a plan about it. That's really... So when I go back and I explain that to people, it's like, well, you know, I can't believe he said it the way he said it. Well, now maybe you understand it. Because we meet, we have staff, we talk daily. These are the things that make government function, and it makes it function at every level to every department. We looked at a lot of different things that we've had to take on. And when they start running these different areas, they looked at what happened in the past in those departments. They're looking at where they're at now, and we're projecting together what the future's going to be. And obviously, that's really what you would want us to do, is to have some goal or some objective about how we're going to get things done. And that is something that we're doing. One of the biggest things that I want to share, maybe later on in January, again, I've been a little bit under the weather. I'm surprised I'm not coughing as much as I've been before I got here. But, you know, I wanted to be able to provide a little bit more explanation about what we're talking about tonight, as well as some explanation about where we are financially and fiscally. We're very sound. I am really just really honored and blessed that we've been able to come through some of the challenges that we've had. And so that has really been one of the things that I'll mention as I go into trying to give a reasonable state about where Markham is. I, as you know, got elected 2017. I really didn't get situated and seated from court battles and that kind of thing until 2018. So by 2019, when I did take office, it's been with about four years solid that I probably have. Being in the second term, but only having about four that really had gotten anything really done. But I can say in that time, you know, I took over a government, unfortunately, that was reasonably plagued with financial difficulty. It just, that's just how it was. We were about $10.5 million in the hole. Where we're heading now and what we've done to manage government and be fiscally sound, we haven't had a... We're going to have another audit. By the time we have the next audit, we would probably have cut $7 million out of that and would probably have about another $3 million or so that we would have in deficit. But what's good about that? You know, of course, it wasn't good upfront because, you know, that meant budget cuts. That meant tough decisions. That meant a lot of people... I can count probably 43 employees that were not here, you know, at least in the first three years. And then about another year later, probably another 10 after that, about 50-something employees in that time that we could not keep. For one reason or another, it just wasn't, certainly wasn't fiscally sound. But in terms of some of that, if you had that much room to be able to get rid of some people or they have to go for one reason or another, then everybody's not working. And that's probably, if anything, anybody ever knew about me working here, and I can't say that I was the most popular person at City Hall, and that was because I was going to work. And if you were around me and you weren't going to work, you weren't going to be here long. And that's just how it's going to be with me, and it's always been that way with me. And I know that Chief Tony worked out. I mean, he understands that. I know that the other people have been around me long enough to know that as well. But that's what it takes for us to manage government. We were able to reduce the deficit and the debt and get it down at the same time. And that's what we've been able to do by cutting. We still were able to balance the budgets each year. Good city council that really took the bull by the horns as well to say, hey, Good city council that really took the bull by the horns as well to say, hey, we have to tighten up. And they did that. And we balanced those budgets and we still provided service. And that's what you want your community to be able to do. We have employees. A good portion of what we have in budget has to go towards employees and paying them. We have to pay their pensions, their benefits. And we want to make sure that we're able to do that and have the right amount of people to provide service. But one of the other things that we were able to do is get rid of a ton of losses. I mean, we were just, there was another plague, if you will, with, you might as well put a sign at the door saying, there's free money here. And that's what happens. People just take advantage of the system. We had employees that took advantage of the system. And fortunately, a lot of them are gone. And that's really how it should be, because that's what you would want. I would think you would want, and I know as a taxpayer myself, that's what I would want. But we've been able to lure business. That was one of the first things that we did. We proved that we were stable in government. I think that the council proved that. That's where, you know, we go back to talking about Amazon and them seeing and believing that things were going to change, and it did. We had a lot of people that worked hard on that, but we closed it. So we gave credit where credit was due. There were people that were ahead of us that laid some groundwork, that's for sure. But we had to reestablish things and make people believe that Markham is stable. We've attracted a lot of new development and people that are knocking at the door all the time. And we're doing that by cleaning up our act. And one of the things that I used to say all the time, you know, and I just don't, I believe in the simple things. If we clean up and we let people see that this is a clean, safe community, people may want to come to it. We're not, again, not perfect, but those are small details that we need to do, like any other community. And I always hated the fact that you would come past one-six-seven or one-five-nine going east or west. And soon as you cross over to Markham, you know, why should any other town look different? Why should they look different and we look different? Why should we not be clean and they're clean? You know, it just, it's not ridiculous. And we've accomplished that. You know, it's attention to detail. And sometimes, again, I'm not going to tell you that we're perfect. But if you're not seeing reasonably, you just, maybe you're being a little bit unreasonable. If you can't see it, then I just don't know what to tell you. Because something's happening and it's there. It's just not all, but, you know, you're going to have, we're just not perfect. We're not there. But that's what tonight's about, and us telling you where we're heading and what we're doing, to make sure that we have a good, clean image and a good vision. And we've got some people that are working with pride. I'm not heavy on being overly prideful, because I think that humility is very important and probably stronger yet. And we have some people that don't run around and just know more than I do to beat on their chest about, I'm this or I'm that. Because I don't want to be a father to people like that. I don't think that that's what we need to win. And we haven't done that with anybody to win and get where we're at. So we've been able to, in the time and the four years with managing fiscally, we've gotten new public works equipment. I could say that we have not had this amount of equipment probably in thirty years. Have we had this amount? I ran public works for short spell under Mayor Miller with Dan Costello. And I know personally that we've never had public works equipment to this extent. And we've been pretty fortunate. People want to know how we're doing that, when that's the one that we, we probably, we won't be transparent on that one. Other than, we're using the taxpayers' dollars right. We're just not going to tell you where we're buying, because there will be a competition. So I won't tell that. That's a trade, inside trade secret of where we're getting our equipment from. And it's working out for Markham. And we want that advantage to remain on Markham's side. So we just recently, I know we got a new fire truck coming. We just had gotten another one not too long ago, but we're getting another one as well. And it'll put our fire department in a place that'll have us set for the next twenty years. Because that's how those vehicles typically are. If you've noticed, we've got new squad cars. We've got a ton of them. We've got, we were able to get, what other municipalities are doing with enterprise, or fleet management, I should say, in enterprises. One of the companies has worked with that, and we kind of mimic that of other communities, what they're doing. And we joined suit as well. We've been able to get code cars as well. Another thing that I'm saying here that we've been able to do is settle our union contracts. It's a very big deal to make sure that labor is settled. You're not arguing with them all day. I think the first contract that we have with firefighters, I know the first contract, we settled in about forty-five minutes. The second contract, I think we probably settled in about an hour, because I teased them for fifteen minutes. But it would have been about the same. But that's a good thing, to where you get to the table. And I know that we're about to sit with the police pretty soon on their contract. And we're ready to sit down and have a good conversation about taking care of the employees. Because I want to pay them, because I'm going to ask them to work. So I want to make sure they're getting a wage. If they're not working, then the alternative is that they're not here working. They're working for somebody else. So we've been able to do that. Mr. Champion is going to be working, as he mentioned, about trying to do more things with grants. He works with our lobbyists. We do have a staff lobbyist in Springfield. Those will be able to, that will bring us additional revenues coming up here as we go into twenty-twenty-three. I think that the future is bright for Markham. I think that it's good. I think that there's a management, the change of what we're doing in the community is at least on the right track. Again, you know, I'll be the first to say it. I'm not going to wait for somebody else to try and tell me what I'm not doing. I'll tell you that. I can't, I'm not doing it at all. So if I miss something, I'll take it and I'll listen to what you think we could do and we can make it better. But, but don't lie to me too now, because you didn't elect me to just take down for anything either. So I do have to stand some ground from time to time. I would hope you would want me to do that too. But finally, I just think that all of what we're doing should make, definitely, what a lot of people want to see is they want to, they want to see their taxes get better, and they want to have a better quality of life. And these are the things that do that. And as long as we're doing the things to manage in this community the way that we're managing, then we have a good recipe for what's going to be bright and good for our future. So that is one of the things that I wanted to say tonight. What we'll do is we'll take some questions through an open forum to myself and staff. And certainly, that's what we'll do here. We'll take probably the next thirty minutes or so, for whatever time that we have here, and we'll talk. So, Mr. Champion and Ms. Soggy. So there's no particular order. If someone has a question, or you want to have some dialogue about something, I just wanted to make sure that first we told you what we're doing. So I think we can hear everybody. They just stand, you know, anybody wants to stand and say something. Or you can take that mic too, that's fine. Everybody heard me pretty good. So all right, who wants to talk tonight? You'll start in the back? All right. Okay, good.
I'm sure why most of us are here because of you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I think I talked to you last time. I don't know if you remember. That, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm like maybe one of the youngest guys in here, but a lot of these people look, I mean, if anybody, they look a little older than me. So you've got to realize that a lot of young people are not in here. I don't know if they don't care, or if they don't own, or what, but I'm sure everybody's in here because of the taxes. It's just getting, it's getting unbearable. Again, I told you before that a lot of people just don't walk away, and then Markham's going to look like Harvard. Markham's going to look like Detroit. It's getting bad. And with the way the credit ratings, credit, everything, people just don't care anymore. Like people are walking away from their cars. They're robbing, they're stealing, anything to make ends meet. I do like Markham. So far, it's been great, but not to blame it on you, but since you've been here, my taxes have increased like six grand. I don't know if that's your fault or what, but that's, I'm sure that's why most of us are here. These taxes are getting ridiculous. Thirteen thousand for a house that I paid a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for? It's a bit much. We're paying, again, I told you before, we're paying Orleans Park, Frankfurt taxes for Markham houses. You know, I'm proud of my little house that I got. You know, I got it at a steal because somebody else's taxes got too high, and they just say, you know what, I'm walking away. So I got mine at a steal, but I paid a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars back in twenty-thirteen. My property taxes are thirteen thousand dollars. That's expensive. So I mean, we're all here for that. I'm pretty sure. You've done a great job with the lights and all. It looks nice.
Right, well, you know, you came up to when the assessor came, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. You know, I said I was going to come down. It'd be a little easier for me to come down.
Uh, you step up there, you sit.
I'm so loved. He asks, what is that?
You know, what, the reason why I took the time to explain what the function of government is is because the only thing we can do about taxes is set the stage. That's it. We don't have any control of Springfield in regard to however they handle the tax rate. We don't have any regard to what they do in Cook County, and however they calculate and measure that tax. We don't have any control of that. But what we do have control of is what I talked about. All I can do is, like I said, is set the stage to make the community stronger or better, and see who's going to come to try and invest here. That's when your taxes go down. But what every municipality is saddled with is just like when we dealt with Amazon. Of course, that was the first thing that came up out of the assessor's mouth, which I thought it was, he was just doing his job and doing his due diligence, was to bring up that Amazon got this incentive to be here. But they wouldn't have come here and offered thirty-two-hundred jobs or thirty-six-hundred jobs, whatever the math is. We had to offer whatever incentive we could to get this sideways skyscraper sitting in the building, I mean, in the community. And start to realize that maybe it'll become a magnet to bringing other things here to drive your taxes down. We have nothing else to do. There's nothing else we can do. And trust me, they weren't going to come unless you offered them the same Will County incentive. They could have went anywhere else where somebody else would offer them that. Because we had some people saying, well, why don't you rebate the TIF money back to the residents? Well, if we gave you five hundred dollars, what's that going to be, thirteen thousand? Not much. It'd be ridiculous. And then Amazon would leave anyway, because that's why they came. So we have to balance it out and not let the next TIF be at a higher percentage and give away the whole incentive package and not be able to give you something back. But we have to draw them in. We're making sense with this. And I'm not afraid of any of it, but there's not a lot we can do with that. There's not a ton we can do. Have you done appeals? That's why we brought them, you know, the appeals from them and the appeals from next door. I've appealed my taxes every year, probably for the last fifteen, twenty years I've been appealing my taxes. And now, me and my wife have a little bit of a freeze on top of it. Because, well, because I'm raging. And so that's what happens. But we've been appealing it, and I know other people have appealed their taxes and gotten them down. And that's the only thing that we can do. I don't know what else I can say about it, other than we're trying to run government to get some people here that can lower that tax. That's the best I can say. You want to go next?
Yeah. On that, Mayor, we could get the treasurer involved. Because it's my understanding that, like, you guys give tax incentives for business, correct?
What's that?
You give tax incentives to draw business here, correct?
Yeah, we give tax incentives, correct.
Okay, and when that business don't stay, okay, when you give them an incentive, how do you guys make up that levy? Like, if you're used to budgeting that money for services, how do you make that levy up when that business leaves? And you gave them that incentive? It just seems like our section sixty, or his section, is carrying the freight.
You're not carrying the freight, Mr. Cooper. Let me just tell you, you're not.
Your thirty thousand has lessed less than me. You've got the same exact problem.
Because, because the thing is, the appeals have to be put out uniformly. You've got a lot of people who have not appealed their taxes. And by the way, this is not taxing.
I understand that, but what you're telling the people is not a hundred percent correct. Let's have the treasurer here.
I'm not going to debate it with you. That's how.
That's why you're not going to.
No, I'm not. So that's where we're at. I explained.
So are you open to having the treasurer's office and the board of review come to me, besides the assessor?
You've already done that. Why don't you go to whoever's got a good point, and you go help? Because I'm helping in the.
I'm asking you, as mayor, as part of a community.
You go help. And that's all, okay?
That's what I thought.
Next question.
I have a cold, so I'm not going to speak long. I have it typed out. We had Katie come for the meeting, the assessor's office. What benefit would it be to have the board of review come and have a meeting with Markham to explain the appeal process a little bit more to the residents and have the forms available so the residents can either ask questions or get help filling them out at this particular meeting? Now, I called the assessor's office today and requested the board of review to come out to have a meeting with the residents. And they said that they need your authorization and your approval that you would participate at the board of review meeting. I watched Midlothian from last night. It was very informative. It was much more informative for the residents than actually having Katie here explaining. It was a little bit dry, but now you want us to educate ourselves on the taxes and what we can do. And they, their explanation was just exemplary. It was fabulous. So would you give your authorization? Because they're ready to send an email to the board of review, but I need to confirm with them that I have your authorization and participation for this particular meeting.
We can talk about it, because, you know, that's one of the things that Mr. Katie explained. There's a process, and those who need help, the first place that they should have been going, it was with Mr., was it Jack? Mr. Jordan, what's it next door? Willie Jones.
Jones, Willie Jones, yeah. That's the officer that I'm working with.
Here locally, and you can start the appeal process there. That's where we have resources. And it was explained that evening. And if people have individual troubles with that, I'm not going to call a whole meeting out for that, because everybody is not affected by that. Your specific area was affected. And I dealt with the, before we even had these meetings, I know what happened over there. And some people were disapproportionately, because Mr. Cooper's tacky has got to take care.
Mine went up.
Well, his went down.
Mine went up.
And other people, it's gone that way. So, but it's part of the appeal process. Did you appeal?
Yes, I have.
Okay, are you waiting for your decision?
Yes, it will go to the board of review, which will take months.
But that's what, that's.
But I'm saying informing the residents of the appeal process. It was very informative.
Everybody doesn't have the problem that just a few people are. There are, there is a section of town by him. There's a section of town by you all. It's not everybody.
Well, would it be done for that section?
For whoever needs it, we'll see what we can do to accommodate it. But it doesn't require taking the time for everybody who isn't having that issue.
Okay, but you saw the participants at that meeting.
I saw it and we answered, and that's why they came out. And we haven't heard anything from anybody else but you all, and he's back.
You all, I'm just bringing it up tonight. What do you mean, you all?
I, you and Mr. Cooper.
No, I have not said anything until tonight.
Listen, I have not heard from anybody, okay, period. I haven't heard from anybody that came that night. And I'm telling you, my. And I'm telling you, my office hasn't heard from anybody but you. And he's always saying that he's got his done. He's just talking for everybody else. But where are they? I, I feel his pain. I feel anybody who's got that pain. But I'm telling you what we're doing about it. And if individuals have trouble with it, this ain't, well, this is not where you get that answer. Other than that government is running as it should run. So, that's not, that's not, everybody's not here for taxes.
Okay, my, uh, next question.
Everybody would love to have the taxes low, no matter how high they got. Trust me. Now, it can turn into a tax meeting, because everybody wants to vote. But that is not what this is about.
Mm-hmm, no, it wouldn't be a tax meeting. It would be, uh, more informative for the employees on the appeal process.
Well, that's open to anybody who got that problem. They can start by Mr. Jones next door and they can start that board of review process. I used to appeal my own taxes and went to the board of review. You can do it yourself, but I started getting somebody else to do it.
Yeah, me too. Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna go to the next question.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm ninety years old. I've been living in Markham for sixty-five years. I was paying real estate taxes up until twenty thirteen. Now, I noticed you mentioned that freeze. Now, I'm receiving three exemptions, homestead, senior, and the senior freeze. My exemption is more than my taxes, so therefore I don't pay them. So how much is that contributing to, it's falling on the back of the younger peoples? Cause once you get sixty-five, if your income is not over sixty-five thousand, how many senior citizens is getting that kind of money? You quantify for the senior freeze. And then you get all those exemptions, then you're not paying any taxes. And every time I hear somebody mention about the high taxes, I think about those younger peoples. There's, somebody has to make up. When I stop paying, when I stop paying taxes, somebody had to make up for that. And I really truly feel so sorry.
You know, one of the things that, you're, you're, you're a hundred fifty percent correct. So you've lived all this time and give us that wisdom back and you're a hundred percent correct. Because that's what happens in Cook County when people appeal their taxes. Unfortunately, that tax within that circle, be it sixty or anywhere else, still has to be paid. That one number over by sixty we'll use has to be paid. So all those people feel, so Mr. Cooper appealed his taxes over in sixty, but this one, that same number is needed that has to be paid in that section. So it might fall on somebody else. That's how it works. That, it works like that all over Cook County. But that's pretty much how it works. And you're absolutely right, right? Because a lot of people, they don't, they don't stay in the neighborhoods they stay because they're retired and they don't wanna pay for schools anymore. Because half of what your, your money that, the, the money's not going to the city of Markham. We don't just levy everything from Markham. If you look at these different, uh, school districts, there, that's where most of the money is going to, is in the school district. And some people don't wanna pay for that anymore. You're so right. But thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Next question up here.
How you doing, Mayor?
Hi.
Everybody else? Uh, so we've been talking about property taxes for a while now and, um, you know, it's something that we already know that nobody saw overnight. But I think, one of the things, when I think of a state of a union or a state of the city, I think of future, uh, something in the future. So a part of fixing property taxes is business. What is the business outlook for Markham in twenty twenty-three and four? Cause we haven't heard anything about that. And we ask a lot, a lot of nice visuals around the line.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is a good opportunity, Mr. Chad, in the cover. You got to expose sure and all of this stuff.
Mr. Patterson, so, um, it's a timely question too. And Mayor, thank you for this town hall. Um, so twenty-three, just to kinda let you know, a lot of people think that things happen overnight. We have to create TIF districts. We just created a new TIF district, um, as I think everybody already know that was approved. This attracts business to Markham. So the first, one of the first businesses that are going in the new TIF district is, uh, right at the first rendering, which is, uh, Buddy Bear, um, car wash, right here. That, that TIF district is going to, Buddy Bear's gonna be the anchor. There's gonna be restaurant, retail space, um, in that particular section, which is Hundred and Fifty-Ninth, is, is that Sawyer? But I think that's.
It's between Spalding and, uh, Spalding, Sawyer, Spalding.
Right there. So that's one, um, opportunity there. We have, um, where you know, where the Old Calgary site is, that's Thorne's Gas Station. Next to Popeyes, we're gonna have a Dunkin' Donuts, um, that's gonna go, um, which is, there's a rendering in the back. So whenever, you know, when everybody gets the opportunity, you can walk around and look at some of the exhibits. But Dunkin' Donuts is coming here. We're entertaining, um, restaurants.
The existing one is moving from their location, so.
Right, so.
In their building.
Right, that's correct, Mayor. So the Dunkin' Donuts in the Canterbury Plaza, that lease was on. So the owner, um, has a, uh, purchased property, uh, at a new location, so it's gonna be a drive through. But the one thing that we are, um, consistently, um, doing is recruiting businesses. But it takes incentives like, like the mayor mentioned, like Amazon. It takes TIFs, it takes some Class Eights to help with, to offset some of the building, uh, building expenses. So these are some of the things that we're consistently working on and, and, and TIF helps attract businesses. When you have an economic engine like Amazon, companies follow Amazon. I know the mayor mentioned that, but there is, uh, space that we are looking at in Canterbury. There's a lot of things that are coming down, uh, the pipeline in twenty-three. But more importantly, it takes, uh, resources, take grants, it take a lot of things. But we have to be creative with attracting new business by offering tax incentives. And, um, you know, so those sort of things.
Careful with tax incentives, though. Because we're, we're not gonna, we're not, I don't believe we're in a position to continue to give away the bank. That's not what we're, we're not gonna do that. That can't hap- the, but you have to become a valuable player at some point. And that's something that I believe that we're becoming. Uh, we've got a couple of other projects that, uh, we have a, a travel plaza that's still in the works, that's near the expressway. There's another, uh, matter that we're working across, uh, the street from Amazon, that we're working on as well. Um, so there's different, different sections of town that we're working on. One of the things that we, we kind of envisioned, and Buddy Bear was gonna kind of be the kickoff, uh, is to try to re, uh, make, re, re, make a, a new look down Hundred Fifty-Ninth going to the west. You know, if you've ever looked at the, um, the Cloverleaf and, you know, whenever we had extra time from, aside from our city duties here, we would go down there and make sure that we would try to improve that. And we would improve that because that is a, a corridor entryway to us and says how we look when you come to us. We're also working on the state to reimburse us for our time, money and effort of going down there. And we've been in talks with them about doing it. But we're the benefactors of that. When we go down there to straighten it up and make it look nice, that benefits us when people see that. We're taking pride in the community in that regard. So there's a lot of development. You know, people have always said, well, you know, when are we gonna have a restaurant? When are we gonna have this? When are we gonna have that? You know, the, the, the truth of the matter was, until you, you did the things that we talked about tonight, you aren't gonna get anybody to come. If, you know, it's no different than if you invite me to your house and I don't feel like it's clean or it's safe, I'm not visiting and I may not come back. It's just like you, you said in the, in the past, uh, the gentleman in the back. You know, this, these taxes that you're paying, that you could pay these taxes in Orleans. You don't have to pay them, Mayor. Well, that's true too, but there, there are trade-offs. But the, the point is, we wanna try and kill that. I, I just hope you can live through it some kind of way. I, I hope and pray that you and others that are in that dilemma, we can find some solution that's gonna work. I, I'd hate to lose you. But we're doing our part to try to meet that. And we understand it, but it's not all on us. We, we're doing our part. That's what this state was about when we started talking. Go ahead.
No, Mayor, thank you for that point. Um, and just, I was gonna, um, add to, um, the question of Mr. Patterson. So it, it's a timely question, because what's going on right now, and Tesco is here. Mike Hoffman, can you stand, stand up for a moment? This is Mike Hoffman. Mike Hoffman is with Tesco and Associates. Tesco and Associates, um, what we have going on right now, and what we've talked about in previous council meetings. But we simultaneously, we are recently and, um, updating or modifying our comprehensive plan. And right outside of the table, right now, Carol is there from Tesco and Associates to, um, distribute, uh, real-time surveys. If you wanna, you could have a QR code. But to ask exactly what you want to see in Markham as well, while we're going through the, um, modifying and the comprehensive plan. And Mike, can you just kind of speak to that just a little bit, just real quick?
Mr. Chad, you mentioned, we're doing two things. We're updating the overall zoning ordinance, which regulates land use in the community. Uh, but we're also updating your overall community comprehensive plan. That's kind of a, a long-range guide to, to how you would like to grow and develop as a community. Uh, what are your, what are your concerns? How do we improve everything from, from getting around mobility-wise in the community to land use? And there'll be a significant section on economic development. And there's also sections on housing to address issues in the neighborhood and those kind of things. So we really do want your ideas and comments. There's a big board. You can write your big ideas on, on it out there if you want to. You can fill out the little cards that you can pick up out there that have a survey, uh, link on them. If you like to do it the old-fashioned way and fill it out by paper, there's paper copies there that you can do that as well. But we really are in the kind of the information gathering, identification of issues. Once we have a good handle on those, we can give you some, some solutions and integrate that into a strategic plan that you can then carry forward and implement for the next five or ten years.
And just that, right, Mike and Tesco and Associates, they just updated Madison's comprehensive plan recently. Up to, uh, over the last year?
Yes.
Yeah. Which hadn't been updated in about, what, seven, eight years, I think?
Oh, no, Madison was about fifteen years behind when they made you do this.
Yeah, so we might catch up as well.
All right. Um, any other questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, along the lines of, uh, you said, maybe we're completing states, grills and buildings, things like that. Is there a plan for vacant properties that, that are up there? Like, uh, I don't know.
Well, you know, I, I'll tell you, um, uh, there is a plan. It, it just isn't as formulated as today as it should be. And that's because we inherited a, a program that was dealing with vacant property that wasn't going well. In fact, uh, I think Friday I have a deposition for dealing with that going to court. Um, and I think that, um, how some people might have seen here at the council meeting one evening, one of the gentlemen came up, you know, where that was involved in his court case, uh, where he had, he was promised property through several different people that were selling parcels of land from Markham and he never got it. They took his money and, and, and used Markham as, to say, we're gonna give, give him property from Markham and they never gave it to him. Well, he came and asked me, well, where's my property? I said, I got nothing to do with that. Markham didn't benefit from it and I'm not gonna get in that. I said, the people that took your money need to go to jail, if anything. They need to, they need to do something to them. And so we're in court and once we settle that, uh, the, the parcels that we know that we have had to take by hazard or condemning for one reason or another, or, um, some of those things. Were you gonna comment on some?
Oh, he's pointing to him. He had the noise.
Oh, okay. Oh, tell him to stop making noise. Um, then we'll come up with a plan. But I'm gonna tell you like this, though. That dollar property stuff ain't happening in Markham. That's, you know, it's just like the same thing that, why people are saying what they're saying about the TIF. They're right. At some point, we can't give away it. We gotta, you know, so if we got some of those properties, but we want reasonable market rate, that's your money and it goes back in the bank. And we generate that for you. You know, that's what we have to do, but we, we'll get a plan that's gonna be reasonable to start getting, you know, getting people who have capital. I see Mr. Spark, that young man, he's, him and his father, uh, they do a lot of developing work and things like that. And he's asking all the time as a young developer, and I can't wait till some of you all can, can do that. And some people, but we've gotta get through this court, um, matter before we can start doing it. I think the only thing that we've been able to work with is a little bit of the, uh, commercial, uh, property that we got from the land bank ourselves that came to us when they were leaving out. But these other vacancies, uh, I can't wait till we box them up and then we vet people to come in. Uh, you gotta have some capital, obviously. And we don't want a lot of people renting. You know, if we can get homeownership, um, we need that. And that goes to, um, what we're talking about with, with taxes too. And Mr. Cooper asked a, a fair question about what happens when people leave. Well, that property tax still has to be paid. And so that means that it gets divided up when businesses leave or when homeowners leave and things like that, or property's sitting there. Somebody's gotta pay their tax. And so then it just gets divvied up and the rest of us have to carry it. So that's how it works. So we, we'll, we'll have a formal plan pretty soon. Um, I'm hoping that we can get through this court matter and. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll try and make some formal announcements, um, at council meeting and on websites so people have the opportunity to come and bid on it and get these properties. You know, we, we don't want, I don't wanna be in real estate business. You know, I want, I want people, if you, if that's what you do, but I will, I'm sure the council will say the same thing. We want homeowners, if that's what we wanna push, because, um, uh, it's not, every, every renter's not bad. But, um, they, they don't care the same, not all the time. So it just depends. So, yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll come back to you, though. Hold that thought now. Yes, sir?
Yeah, yeah, it's going, Mayor. I'm, I'm up here all the time. I come see Derek and what's name. And I understand the young man's frustration about that what's name. Like I told my wife, why move somewhere else when your taxes ain't that problem? And so that's, that is a, a real disaster that we have this issue is that the camp, the downstate, they decide that they're gonna like inflate somebody else and somebody else has got to pay for it. But it should be distributed. I mean, why aren't we as a community going down and say, hey, we gotta distribute it properly? I understand the scenes. I had a senior stay next to me, you know, she was paying a hundred dollars, you know? And, and to me, I'm like, okay, but I wasn't paying that extra time. And that's, his is six times what mine's is, you know what I mean? And even though I'm not sixty-five yet, I'm only twenty-nine right now. But I understand his frustration and I have to tell that young man, look, you hang in there. And he can go right, he can, he can write that off at the first of the year. Just get you a good tax person and he can write that off. That is exactly what I got planned. And let the government give you some of that money back. It's just how it works, you know what I mean? Stay in that, hang in there. But my concern is that over the other strip by Amazon, there's six vacant properties and I, I, I know the other gentleman just asked about lots and all that kind of stuff and whatnot. But I know this process is just dragging on. I've been here fifteen years and I'm looking at it. I see the community ru- rise up, believe me, past the old man and everything. And I also seen it s- still be stagnant, you know what I mean? I look at Canterbury, I look at places down Hundred Fifty-Fourth, I look on the other side and whatnot. This, if that transition is not moving fast, it's, cause that could be balancing out the taxes at some point where it can spread out. Yeah, and so that's, my question is, who, who, we as the community, if you, if you can't get that voice down there, who, we need to talk to.
Well, you know, you bring up a good point. Um, I, I, you know, um, I personally had a little bit of experience, um, Bruce Rauner wasn't very popular with anybody in the state of Illinois. Uh, he was reasonably popular with me, cause he signed my rights, obviously. But he fought the legislators that were under Madigan. And what he fought them for, because most of them were property tax appealers. So when Kegy got elected, he went to Springfield to try and change the law, to make sure that the taxes are distributed proportionally the right way in the state of Illinois, using that tax rate and certainly up in Cook County. And he failed, because Madigan would let it through. I believe that we have a legislature now with, um, Chris Welch now is the Speaker of the House and those guys would probably do the right thing now. They're not, they, you know, but Rauner had actually, uh, had even stopped a lot of them from getting their checks, that, because they had, uh, conflict of interest. They were appealing like, uh, Burke was appealing for Trump downtown. You know, people think, things like that. So a lot of these people had dual interests in Springfield and the law couldn't get changed. And I remember very vividly, because that's how I knew Fritz Kegy, cause I was seeing him in Springfield, cause I was down there fighting for my life at the same time. I believe that those laws will get changed and we'll work on. That's something else I can do, is to get a hold of some of the other legislators to try and work a little bit more on that. And that's something different from the day-to-day. that's something different from the day-to-day. But the day-to-day is what we're really concentrating on, because it does two things. It'll get taxed down, but it also will make a quality of life better, and that's what we all want. You know, everybody says they don't wanna go two towns over to eat, or two towns over to shop all the time. It's just wrong. Fortunately, the council had the nerve, and I say nerve, good nerve at that, to vote and try to do some things to keep our grocery store. We almost lost it. Thanks to them, we didn't lose it.
Now, part two of my question, I go over to the building department, I deal with this back and forth, and I know how it works. And I actually was replacing some windows in my home, but I had a permit before that could, the pandemic happened, and we and my wife went over there, and we got the permit, being the contractors on our own property and whatnot. It was $26, and the windows that I had purchased, based on the walls, $7,000. Now, the new windows I got, they $2,000, but they charged me $110 on the permit. So, I know inflation ain't that much. That's 400%. So, what are they doing in that? And a lot of this process, I know it's, you're still working on it, and it's great, but you know, it still needs to be, the customer service has to be a little bit better. And it just needs to go through that transition, be a little bit better. Because a lot of people, I'm like, we know some of our people, we know some of our people, how they come in and act, but the truth of the matter is, they got to be above that, on the Michelle side. When they go up, we go down.
Right.
It's just weird.
Well, I can tell you that the city council passed fee changes, so that's probably what you experienced. The first fee that you got probably should have been about a hundred or so in the first place, or close to it, but they got most of that straightened out. And so, the fees that are out there now are comparable to what everybody else is doing in the region. So, that's pretty much what you should have, that should be the answer.
Our community income is not the same, so we can't really kind of make a treasure on another community base.
No, we're not, we're not doing it based on, we're doing it based on the market itself. We're not basing it off of what the economic, social status of the people in the community. We're not basing it on that. It's based on what's comparable to the market. Okay, Alman, thank you. Okay, who was next? Yes, sir?
I have a question. I'm up living in Markham, out of the Bay of West, and I have a question about the skating rite. What's the skating rite doing? Can they help move you or something over there?
We just actually had a little bit of a conversation at the last council meeting about it. We're hoping in the next few months to do something solid. We got a lot in pretty good condition from the woes that we had with it in terms of the structure. We had a lot of structural issues, and it's in much, much better shape. We have to make sure that we can, over the next few months, and trying to button up the last couple of things structurally that we need to do, we left it in check, we leased it out, and we were able to see a good profit from it, and they helped rebuild a lot of things on the building. There's still a couple of things that need to be buttoned up, and then we have to sit down and see what it's gonna cost us to run it, and see if we can generate some good programs and some profit, and not let good money go after bad. So, we wanna make sure that we're fiscally sound about doing that.
And that would help out the economic situation there also.
That would definitely help, because we pay a bond on it, and that's something that we've been able to do, is decrease bond debt. In the next 10 years, some of these bonds will be gone. You're talking about us having an attitude with somebody coming to talk to us about a TIP, we might not talk to them at all, because the debt will be down, and we can have more attitude about taking somewhere else, and we don't need it. Because we're not going to take down, we wanna make sure that we get the same deal that you would give two towns over somewhere else.
So, you're saying I can start running my spring?
You can, you can start polishing your skates, and sometime in March and April, I'm hoping we can get over there and skate. Yes, and that is the, you know, the older lady did mention something, that we're going to multi-purpose the building. It's not gonna be exclusive to skate, so there will be other entertainment and recreation that we intend to try to make a draw for the facility, and get more bang for the buck. So, yeah. Who was next?
This was also, I guess, police chief.
Okay.
It's great that all these businesses are coming, but don't they kind of put a strain on the resources, police department, fire department, which in turn makes you hire more people, create more pensions, and then those businesses wrap up and leave? Because Amazon's a big company. If they say, you know, "I don't wanna be in Markham no more," they'll probably have to pay a fine or something, but you've already committed to 20 more police officers to compensate for that traffic and that influx of people, and now we're stuck back. We're right back where we were, because now you're paying pensions, you're paying more police officers, the traffic has increased. We need more of him out there. I think I saw him on the news, but that's the guy that was writing all them tickets up down. We definitely can use that. There are some, there are some places in the state where people are like, "I'm not driving through there," because they will stop. They will, and they will write you.
They're actually working on that.
So, I mean, like, with getting all these businesses, which is great, and it keeps, it makes us excited, because we're thinking that we're gonna benefit from it, but it also increases the strain on our resources that we already have, the fire department, the police department, because now you're hiring more people, creating more pensions, gas, all of that, you know?
Well, hold on a second. I'll just say this to you. I would tell you, it's twofold to answer you about that. You would be correct if that's what we were doing, because we weren't gonna put our eggs in that basket, you know? We've been able to survive with what we've had. We've been using what's in our hand. I think by the time that, am I right, finance director, we've been using what's in our hand? We haven't gone out and did anything extra for this. We're just making people work. The difference was that the work wasn't being done. I'm just being honest. Sergeant, are they working? They're working. I mean, listen, environmentally, environmentally, that's some of the things that we face. I mean, I worked here. I mean, I can't tell you honestly, and I think that they worked here in these departments, they know everybody wasn't working. It is what it is. It's the truth. I mean, it doesn't make everybody bad, you know, but what was, what was that reason for that, though? I don't know. I just, I'm not saying they're a bad person, they just didn't do well by us. That's what I'm saying. And so, what I will tell you is this, that some of the strain and the resource is not coming from the commercial anyway. It's coming from the residential. And I've said that, and whether some people liked it or not, and some people take it the wrong way when I say it, you know, you can live anywhere you wanna live. Nobody's holding a gun in your head to live here. But you have to live within reason and live right. So, I'm not, I'm not wrong for telling people that. You just have to follow the rules to live here. That's all, just like any other town, that's what they ask you to do, right? And so, that's what some people are not doing at their residence. I got a whole wall of firemen back there that can tell you that we have frequent flyers all the time at some of these same houses and residences. And so, when I've gone with some of my colleagues up to IML, and that's the municipal league, we've gone up to get different laws and that, we're getting nuisance ordinances. So, when you're running the ambulance to death, and you're running the firemen all day, and the police all day, we're gonna try and prosecute you in some way to exercise you to move on. Because it's taxing everybody else. It costs that, the fire engine is about $750,000 just to run a fire truck somewhere, because we don't have people that are remotely trying to be fire-safe in any regard. So, you're right, but it's really more on the residential side, and the finance director will tell you, she'll tell you, "You can't hire anybody else." She'll tell you real quick, "It's not happening." Is that right, Ms. Tracy?
That is correct.
You tell me in a minute. I always joke that whenever the treasurer calls me, it's usually when I kind of get the most, I get the nerve, nervous, and everybody has heard me say that. So, we're really watching that, because like, I think you mentioned the last time you were here about levy, you know, because that's what that's about. We're coming back to you to take care of pensions and all of that, and that's what it's about. We levy that to you all. Well, if we just got an employment agency here, then, you know, I wouldn't want that. You know, I don't wanna pay for that. So, I hope I've answered a lot of reasonable questions here. Go ahead. We'll try and get a few more here, and I think we're good.
How's it going, man? Good evening. I just got some follow-up questions with regard to housing, as you might expect. So, I guess for just everybody's reference here, my name's David Sparks. I'm resident of the community, and I've done, is everybody hearing? I've done about...
There we go.
There we go. Yeah, right, exactly. She's, yeah, she's always telling me to speak up, so I gotta speak extra loud when I'm around her. But anyway, so, yeah, we've done about 20 properties throughout the south suburbs, and specifically for the past two years, I focused my efforts in studying Markham and how we can improve Markham, right, because as we know, there's a lot of vacant properties around here. And I've talked to you a lot, a lot of people up here, a lot about the property. So, specifically, you guys mentioned a plan that you guys are potentially working on. So, my first question would be, are you guys referring to the properties that are tied up in litigation, or is this a plan that extends to the properties outside of litigation that are currently vacant?
I don't intend to, unless a property is a hazard in some regard, I don't intend for us outside of something that we have to go acquire. Well, let me ask you this two ways. Whatever we have, we're gonna make that available after court. So, if we have something that we've acquired, we're gonna open that up to the public, and you can bid on it, and all that money can go right back into the taxpayers' coffers, and maybe we'll get some good development citywide out of that. But after that, we're not going to be involved in any acquiring property unless it's a hazard property, it's caught on fire, it's falling down. We've got a few of them like that, that we're taking to court, and we're trying to knock them down. We've been successfully doing some of them. That's one of the things that we had to make a couple changes in the building department about, and we're really getting after them. But people don't need us to go buy property. You can go buy it, you know how to get it, through land bank, you can go through scavenger sales, you can do that. And I just, sooner we stay out for those very reasons.
Yeah, and so, I would kind of push back on that a little bit, because, so with regard to the property litigation, we understand that, but the majority of the properties, because we don't have to speak specific numbers, but this may be 15, 20, I believe, last time I looked at, sorry, properties that Markham has in control. There's 70, 80 other vacant properties that has nothing to do with the litigation that you've been speaking about at this point. So, a part of the deal with attractive businesses as well is viable patrons. So, a town full of empty homes doesn't, you know, bode well for businesses coming into the community. So, that's one aspect that I would encourage you to look at in terms of, you know, maybe be a little bit more proactive about that. Secondly, with regard to the land bank and the status of these properties that are vacant, right? So, a lot of these properties, 40, 50, $60,000 worth of back taxes, you guys, because I've bought a few of them, have 7, 8, 9, $10,000 more of liens against the properties from backwater bills, from all kind of excessive fines from board ups, grass cutting, et cetera. My point is, is that it makes the properties unmarketable. So, if the property needs $120,000, which on average is what I spend on these properties to fix them up, $100,000 minimum, and then I'm paying 60, $70,000 back taxes, fees, liens, et cetera, it's not marketable for somebody to purchase and rehab. And so, kind of on that, on that point, you had mentioned also fair market value for the properties that you do have. Again, these properties that you do have need a lot of work. Fair, the reason why they have these incentives to where you buy properties for $5,000, a dollar, what have you, maybe a dollar is too cheap, but, you know, something low, because you have to make it marketable for people to come and do work. And so, kind of jumping back to the aspect of the vacant properties, Cook County Land Bank, Southland Development Authority, and there's a couple other municipal, local county agencies that work on properties. You guys aren't participating with them on a residential level, because I speak to those guys, so I know that Markham isn't involved with that. And so, I would like to know why, and why there's no effort, and why you think that residential housing is not important for you guys to be involved in when it's clearly a big problem for the city.
Well, again, the biggest thing is, has been legal. That's the biggest problem.
But that's just, that's just a handful of properties.
Yeah, but that's the program, and we just weren't gonna touch it until we clear that out. That is, it was a corrupt system, and we wanted to make it that clear out. So, let me, let me just say that, again, whenever someone gets to that point, if we say fair market value, if we can stop it, I understand that the property may need a lot of work. That's fine. If we're trying to unload it and get rid of it, we do have to try to make it marketable to where somebody may want it. But if we put money into it, in terms of whatever our fees were, if we maintain it and take care of it, that was tax time, dollar, and money that everybody spent, and we're gonna be back to it. So, we may lower the price of the house if we get involved and sell it, but if we said we loved it, take care of it for years, and board it up, and maintain it, the taxpayers are getting the ones. But that's, we talking about every day. They go up and say, "Well, I got tickets on the property, and I got this on the property," and whatever. You're gonna pay all of those fees back to the taxpayers.
Understood.
And we judge it on a daily basis if we need to make those adjustments in different situations. But we haven't gotten that far with the program because of court. And I know how many properties involved, but the system was corrupt. We want a clean slate. Let's finish court, we'll make up a nice program, and we'll make it like we just talked about. We're taking consideration, so people can buy and lock the properties and do whatever they want to do.
Okay, so is that a program for liquidating the properties that you currently have, or are we talking outside of that? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm not going to the outsides in many times, so we'll just work it out with whatever we got to get rid of.
Okay. So, then what are we doing about the other properties that are vacant that are unmarketable? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I would do one thing at a time.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'm not a bit of this like that.
Well, I mean...
I know what it affects. And when you have a whole city to deal with, that's very important, but it's important to do it right. You know, I can't even tell you how long it took me to really understand some of this stuff, because I didn't understand it. You know, I can say a lot of things that I understood in government. I told you all the stuff I've done, but trying to figure out what everybody did or didn't do in the housing structure and market took me some time to digest. And so, I'm gonna take my time with it. I know that housing's vital, but we're doing good. And one of the things that we're doing with those vacant properties, we're trying, from day one, we put dark black boards on it, try to make it to where it doesn't look too blighted, and then we try to clean the property. That's the best we can do, until we can get out of where we're at. I think we've gotten closer, so we're almost there. All right, Mr. Cooper.
Do we need other banks if they own them properties, and they do their fair forces?
Yes. Yeah, we're working on something like that.
Pro Champ, Robbie, can you speak to that, speak about Pro Champ?
Yeah, we're just working with a company now to go after the forebodes, and they're gonna come to the city council here shortly. It's a new ordinance to go after the, where this company's gonna be able to go after the bank.
I think they're taking care of it. Yeah. And Cooper, and it's a revenue generator, so, you know, so, you know, the banks have to pay for that.
Just adding, I'm sorry, I've researched this. The banks are what, how people draw to a smart city, a smart university, and a smart state, you'll see that there's hope. And by means of the mayor and Mr. Champion, who have gotten in contact with my company, my firm, and my team, which, what, January, you're going to Geneva, Switzerland, who have gotten in contact with us for our technology, to have a meeting over there, because they see the value, right? So, you guys are setting a very, very good situation here, coming up with what the village have to build. And I'm saying that personally, not only because I'm owner, but I know that will come to your town.
Thank you. That was a grant that we were able to receive in...
Right, it was a million, like a million.
1.4 million. So, I mean, those are the things that we're trying to do, and that was really what this is really about. That'll be one thing that we didn't have to pay for, but... but it'll be something that'll be out there that will polarize the community. And that's, that's the hope, is to leave here knowing that tonight, that we talked about some things, and, you know, some of it, some of it normal, some of it not so normal, some of it comfortable, some of it not so comfortable for us, that we have to do better and adjust. And I think that we sent a reasonable message about what we're trying to do in the community. And we're, this is the openness that we try to do every council meeting. We try to give a report. All of them aren't here to give it, but I give it, Mr. Champion gives it. Each ward alderman says what they're doing, and we let people know what's going on. We get good financial reports with the treasurer and certainly with our clerk. So, we have government that's working, and that's really what this was about tonight, to let you know that that's what we're doing. So, I thank everybody for coming out, and definitely reach out to any of the staff if you've got any questions. And everybody knows Ms. Ernestina, so you know how to get ahold of my office because she'll be available as well. And I thank all of you for coming out. Please, if you need something, let us know. That's what we're here for, and thank you. Be safe, have a Merry Christmas, and God bless everybody.